Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
Mr. Crawford, you spoke.
About to end this.
Yeah, and there's the rose ceremony. We had some folks there from the VA of Tuscaloosa. They had connected with local hospital. There was a lot of VA patients there this morning. To see the folks in the clinic. It's refreshing to see something new like that offered medical services to our veterans. So I'm real happy about that. Melinda brought us a check today that would be given to the city on behalf of the all festivals coming up. Where expenses will incur to help cover some of the expenses. Thank you for that, except for Alabama Power. We'll call a meeting over our work session. We don't really have a meeting going on. It's just a work session. We have our guests from Alabama Power that'd be Terrence Mowry, Melinda Weaver, and Robert.
Richardson.
Okay, Robert, we're glad to have you. They say this is their backup plan here. He had his tablet going there a while ago. I explained to him that old people can't use tablets, so, you know, he had it all going well. Terrence had come and made a presentation to us about a month ago. We heard from him quickly that their bill was state made in our building. Well, they were two separate buildings that he had not picked up on. He had to go back and re-calculate. He wants to kind of give us the new numbers he's found for us now on LED lighting that we talked about earlier.
Yes, Terrence. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us again. And what we wanted to do is apologize to you all that when we initially looked at typically for a city, there's just only one streetlight account. And so we look at that particular city, which was city of Hamilton. And the first account that we saw, I saw was the actually the smaller account. It's actually the account that I guess Weston, yes. I don't want to know more details about it, but actually an existing account for Weston that you all wanted to keep separate. But it was city of Hamilton, you know, pays the streetlight account. So that's the one I looked at because typically some of the, we do have accounts that size as far as that number of lights. And so not realizing that you all actually have another account. So you have two streetlight accounts. One is your main account, the one that I did not know or didn't realize you all had until after the meeting when we had a discussion about overall your streetlights. So I wanted to come back. I could call Melinda and we talked. So we wanted to get back on your.
Real quick with the.
Yeah.
We had to do some recap, correct?
Yes. And so what we had to do was go back and look at the other account. So what I have today is I brought both accounts, you know, the one that we talked about last month and then.
Around forty-seven.
Yes, lights. And then also talk about the larger account. And so go through those numbers with you all. But what we also brought is not only the, when we met with you all last month, we had basically that one account with forty-seven lights and converting, upgrading all of the LED and the price won't go up seven dollars. Because of what you had out there. And we remember that for roadway lighting, anything of one hundred watt out there now, high pressure sodium or the equivalent, we would, Alabama Power, we would put in, come in, put the equivalent LED heads and head change out and hold the price for you. And those lights you paying about ten dollars and eighteen cents for. So basically we'll come in and do the whole city for those lights. Price won't go up, price won't go down. And you don't pay anything upfront, no capital. And basically you get a whole lighting system, smart city, move the city forward for that cost. Now, anything less than that, like a lot of your open bottoms, which are on the main account. So again, apologies to you all for not looking at that account prior to the last meeting. But we looked at, studied that account, see everything you have. We have over six hundred lights on that account. So what I wanted to do was go through that account first with you all. And then also we'll look at the smaller account and kind of see what we have and what we also have to do. Because what I wanted to do, because of we have so many of the open bottom, which impacts the price. Because if you upgrade a lot of those to the minimum of the one hundred watt equivalent LED, getting those open bottoms off your road, there would be a slight increase. But what we did was come up with some options to kind of offset that for you all. But I wanted to go through everything and then look at the options as we were looking at the offering. And again, this is just what we are, the options you have. And then you can do anything you wanted as far as light, how you want to do it.
I just wanted the council to get the full scope of it and just lay it on us right now.
Okay. And so what we have here, if you look, I'll pass these out. The, your main account, the one that we did not look at last month, is the, is that one right there with the number of, the total of six hundred fourteen lights. And then the small account is the one with forty-seven lights. So I give you all both copy of those.
Both of these.
They are separate accounts.
But both of them have been put together for what you're talking about.
Yes, 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 sir. But I wanted to keep them separate for now so you can look at the cost of both of those. But yes, in the end of the day, whatever you decide to do, we can, whether combined the two. Okay, the main account that you have is the larger account, the five-one-eight-five-four-four-eight-zero-zero-one number. That is the one that you have all, the majority of your streetlight accounts, the streetlights on. And it's about what we're building for six hundred fourteen fixtures. And so what I did was same thing I did as the other small account, show a comparison. Left side is exactly what you've been built. On the left side, it has the number of lights, the type of light, the wattage, and what is, what it costs per fixture. Then you take that cost times the number of fixtures. And so as you see, the fixtures that you have less than a one hundred watt equivalent would be the, you have four of the open bottoms, seventy watt high pressure sodiums. You have one hundred fifty-six of the one hundred watt mercury vapors. And then those mercury vapors are, they go out more than like, a lot of these lights that you currently have are not mercury vapors. As they go out, we don't replace them because they're not environmentally friendly. So we replace it with the mercury. Especially like, we hold the price for you as far as the six dollars. And so you may have a lot of the lights that have been replaced over the years because they go out. And we just, as far as building purposes, as a good partner with our cities, just keep it at the mercury vapor price. So you probably have at least a hundred fifty-six out there somewhere. And so those are six dollars. So that's where, as far as when we look at upgrading your entire city, is where you have the most impact as far as cost. Because the minimum of a one hundred watt cobra, they're ten dollars and eighteen cents. So it's about a four dollar difference. So you take four dollars, kind of a hundred fifty-six lights, you're talking about just under five hundred dollars just to upgrade those lights by themselves. But with that being said, I'll go through all of this and kind of talk about the options and how we can do with the other fixtures to kind of help offset a lot of that cost. And so going down, you have under the one hundred watt mercury vapors, you have the one hundred watt high pressure sodium, which are, you have ninety-three of those and they're about nine dollars fifty-three cents. So it would be a less than a dollar increase for those, about eighty cents, which is not, that's one of the better, far as when you upgrade to the ten dollars and eighteen cents. So that would be less impactful, even more so with the, you have two hundred and sixty-six of the open bottom, one seventy-five watt mercury vapors. Those not as environmentally friendly. And those go out, we replace them with better light, we hold the price again currently. But the good thing about those are, two hundred sixty-six of those lights, you upgrade those to one hundred watt cobra. You get those off your street and it's only thirteen cents increase per fixture. So you get a better fixture on a thirteen cents a month more. So you're talking about taking those two hundred sixty-six lights, less than forty dollars increase for those lights to get them to LED. And then you look at anything under that from the cobra, all the cobra heads, all the way down, all those being changed out. You have, you know, you have over eighty-nine of those. You're talking about head-to-head change out, hold the price for it. So basically the price doesn't go up, the price doesn't go down. So if you look on the right side is what, and this is just the option one, if you decide as the city of Hamilton, where we want to upgrade every light to a minimum one hundred watt cobra. And that means head-to-head change out. When we say head-to-head change out, it's that when we come out here, whatever the equivalent is of a minimum of one hundred watt cobra, we're coming to change it out. And so if you see on the right side, based on lumens, we, you see if we upgrade everything that's below a one hundred watt cobra, anything open bottom, especially mercury vapors, you're talking about about five hundred and twenty watt fixtures. So those is where you see your impact as far as the cost. And below that are all the head-to-head change outs, where we hold the price for it. You know, like the four hundred watt cobra, high pressure sodium, those are all head-to-head change out. So that is the one where if you decided to just do everything head-to-head. Now, where we get into is that we sit down and we analyze your city and your streetlights. And so for us, other option, what we can do if you decide to do the entire city, if you look at the second page attached to this, it is what we, option two. And what we've done is, is that, and as you see, that option one, option two, the increase for option one goes up seven hundred forty-two dollars. That just head-to-head minimum one hundred watt. And then on option two, it goes up less a hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents. And that's based on, on what we decided to do, we look at all of your lights you have out there. Now, anything that's a four hundred watt cobra, we recommend just doing one head-to-head change out. Because you can have those on state roads. So you want, you know, to have that way of lit. But anything currently that you have that is less than a four hundred watt high pressure sodium, as far as looking to do your whole city and you, and say you, at this time, you might not want to do seven hundred dollar increase monthly. Then we can look at having a less of an increased impact where anything currently you have out there that is a roadway light that is not a four hundred watt high pressure sodium cobra, we can all downgrade all those to one hundred watt. Because a lot of those lights, high pressure sodium, been out a long time and they're losing a lot of their lumens. They lost a lot of their lumens. And then you have a lot of them that light pollution. So converting those to at least an LED, because I know some of your, your busy roads, you have open bottoms. You know, you don't have necessarily your cobra. So, so that, that gives us, not to just looking at your city several times and driving the roads. And even when the lights come on, we realize that we can, a lot of places, we can put on one hundred watt equivalent for LED. So with that, doing, if we do, if we did that option on option two, that helps us get the price down for you. Okay, so with that being said.
Now say that again, on option two, what are we leaving out? Are we adding more lights?
No, you're doing head-to-head change out. But what you're doing is you're downgrading all of your existing fixtures that are greater than a one hundred watt cobra, but not as great as a four hundred watt cobra. So in between those wattages, you're downgrading all those fixtures that are thirteen dollars, nineteen dollars a month. You're downgrading them to a one hundred watt cobra, which are ten dollars and eighteen cents. So that, that savings brings down the cost from seven hundred dollars to just over five hundred and sixty dollars.
You're removing the same amount of fixtures.
Right, it's like head-to-head, the citywide upgrades, head-to-head change out. Not adding any more fixtures, not taking away any more fixtures. It's just basically head-to-head change out and doing the minimum of one hundred watt cobra. But if it's greater than, if it's currently out there on your road that is greater than a one hundred watt cobra, like a one fifty, a two fifty, but less than a four hundred watt, we would take those fixtures, downgrade to one hundred watt LED, which is still a better fixture to help off, so you get, you know, less than a hundred and eighty dollar worth of savings from that to help offset the head-to-head change out. So, but with that being said, now the, let's look at, and I want to tie it in, we'll come back to the main account. But let's look at the smaller account that we went over last month. That's the one where if we did a head-to-head change out for those forty-seven fixtures, and that's the account number two-zero-one-one-four-four-one-zero-zero-zero. That's the account if we, I told you, if you did head-to-head change out, which they were one fifty, I mean, one hundred watts and the two fifty. So we hold the price where we're only at seven dollar increase. That's option one. So what we did was I did the same analysis as far as what other option that we can offer you all to help offset overall cost. So let's look at the smaller account on the second page, which is option two. Again, the number doesn't change head-to-head change out. We don't add any more fixtures. We don't take away any more fixtures. So if we do what we did for the other, the big account, as far as any lights that are less than four hundred, which they are on this, this location, especially the two fifties, you have twenty-five of those. We downgrade those to one hundred watt cobra on your road, because they're not four hundreds. And then they've been out there for a long time, the lumens, you know, decrease a lot. And so the lumen range is close to one hundred watt cobras for LED. That helps the price breaks it down, savings of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, okay, on that account. So that savings of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, along with option two on the big account, brings your overall monthly cost down from, now it's down to four, seven hundred forty-two dollars. It breaks all the way down to less than four hundred. So if you do the whole city head-to-head, do a minimum of one hundred watt LED cobra. And anything above that, that is a non-four hundred watt high pressure sodium cobra, downgrade those to a one hundred watt LED. That's where all your savings comes in and it helps offset that seven hundred forty-two dollar cost. And it gets it all the way down below four hundred dollars. And that's overall about seven hundred fixtures. And that is what you'll pay monthly to get your entire city converted to LED. And you pay, you don't pay anything upfront. You get all of those non-environmentally, environmentally unfriendly lights off your roads. And you get all the light pollution removed and you get LED for your entire city. So that, that is the difference from last month. I only went over the smaller account. And then this month, I'm going over the large account with the small account with, and again, these are just options that we recommend. You can do whatever you want to do. And again, it works the same as you asked. Yes, in the end of the day, we can always look at putting everything together. And then if you decide to move forward, the plan will be the same as a new account is created. And that account, you only build as those lights are removed. So when those lights are removed, you know, that main account or the two, two big account will slowly be decreased. Those numbers will go down on that streetlight account. And then as we install, because it's, it's, it's a, it's weeks of, several weeks, sometimes over a month of installing, because that's a large number of fixtures. You're talking about fifteen, twenty years of work doing in two months, less than two months. And so that new LED light, lighting account increases with the numbers until you end up with zero on the existing streetlight accounts. And then you have all of them on the new account, all on the LED.
All right. How much is that video for all of them? What's it gonna be?
About seven forty-eight.
How much a month is it gonna cost?
That's all you're asking.
Let's see. You're talking about.
If you do option one.
If you do option one, it'd go up, we can, you're talking about seven hundred, less than seven hundred eighty dollars if you do option one.
That's the total?
For option one.
That's everything.
Correct. Yeah, everything, yeah.
Seven, seven fifty, huh? Seven fifty, my, say seven forty-eight.
For both accounts?
On option one, correct. And that's complete the whole, because there's two accounts now, but if you complete the whole city, so you're talking about doing it head-to-head. And that's the head-to-head change.
Is that on top of the current bill?
Uh, yes, you add that.
Current bill plus the seven.
How much is current bill?
You, current bill, and this is just the average of twelve months. On the main account, if you look, let's look at, let's look at the main account, the five-one-eight-five-four-four-eight-zero-zero-one, option one. Your current average, and this is just the lights you leased from Alabama Power, we maintain. You're paying about sixty-nine hundred dollars a month. And then if you go head-to-head change out with the minimum one hundred watt cobra, it goes to about just under seven, seven hundred dollars a month on that.
Yeah, just seven fifty to that.
Yes.
So the sixty-nine hundred.
That's all you're getting.
Yeah, I got you. That's just that one, this is just this one account. I broke them out. I kept them separate. And then the other account only goes up seven dollars.
Yeah, so you combine them up and you get up seven forty-eight.
And that's if you do head-to-head change out with a minimum one hundred watt cobra. Remember, that's option one. But you, the option two, you can still convert the entire city head-to-head change out. And instead of being going up monthly seven hundred and eighty dollars, it only goes up less than four hundred dollars a month.
But that's less light.
No, 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 sir. It's less, it's less wattages, but the lumens are still overlapping, so the lighting is still good. It's better than what you have now.
Which comes to the question that I asked you last month for an address, is to where these lights that you're proposing are already in our city? So we can go look at it at night and say, oh yeah, this is the light that we've got. And this is what he says we can do them all to be like. So, so that's why the map comes in.
And what we can do is for you, we can, and I will.
I mean, you just have to tell me one. I mean.
Yeah, we can, we can work with.
Do you understand?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I, I do understand what you're asking, but it's, it's kind of, if, if we give you right now, let's say, a one hundred watt high pressure sodium cobra, that, that we say, okay, this is what you're gonna be downgrading it to, you're not getting apples to apple. Because this light that he would tell you to go look at is a high pressure sodium, which is an amber colored light. It's a yellowish light. It's a fixture that may be, you know, five to ten to twenty years old. So over that time, it's degraded maybe sixty percent. So when we go back out and put a one hundred watt equivalent LED fixture in place of that, it's gonna be brighter. You're gonna get a white light. It's gonna be, so.
Doesn't it say in here that we have two, like you're wanting to switch the five hundred and forty-five two, we already have two of those in place somewhere?
That's right. You have, you have the high pressure sodium, the.
We don't have any LEDs.
That's correct, correct. You don't have any LEDs. But we could probably look up something, I think.
Well, what we can do is basically that one account, you know, over fifteen, twenty years, lights will put up through your city. And then they're just adding you to it. And so what the map will show is, you know, provide you with lights located. Now, you're talking about trying to figure out six hundred lights where they're located now. Yeah, right. And so, and so a lot of your, typically, a lot of your open bottom lights, you know, your open bottoms are different from your cobra. Your open bottom are around, more of a farm light, you know, people call them. And so.
You're talking to street lighting in New York.
Yeah, that's right. And so, and so, um, um, those lights are, a lot of time, majority of time are in your arteries, your neighborhoods. You know, and I will tell you that, you know, some of them in roads coming in where the schools are, you do have some of them at open bottom arms over your roads. And really, those are the ones that, that's, that's a good example of having those type of lights. Especially by, if you want to know a location where you can go look at some light, your schools. You know, as we came in into your city, your beautiful city, you got these open bottoms near your schools that are not equipped, are really not fitting for those roads, you know. It, years ago, people put open bottoms, said some light is better than no lighting at all. You know, yes, I know that these lights may not be the ones that are suited for my streets. But politically, I need to satisfy the residents and put something out there. And once I put something out there, people are okay with it. But over time, the technology and cities, what cities are needing for proper lighting for your roads, and it's still your choice. You know, cities say, well, let's get these open bottoms off the road because the cobra looks so much better, so much more output. So one location, and I'll work and get the map, you know, some locations where you can go look and see. Only thing about it, the maps are really big. And so if you try to put off, you can't, we won't be able to put all lights. What we can do, we can identify some of the main areas where they're located.
I think that she's, I think y'all are on a different page. So what she's asking is, where is one light that would be a two hundred and fifty watt high pressure sodium, sodium cobra? And where is one light that's a one hundred watt?
The map, I was wanting to take the map. And, and the map, the maps will show us where the different type of fixtures are located.
Okay.
And so I can get you some small map. And then it'll show you the type, it should be the type of light it is. It'll show you the address, you know, the intersection, and what type of light it is. And then what we do, we can provide it to you where you can, if you want to, you can go out and look for yourself.
Right, okay. Well, and I'll miss this coming back. In one particular, not really a subdivision, but where there are a few houses located, we have had a streetlight put up, I'm gonna say, within the last two years. And it is extremely bright. The people that live in the house closest to it, it is annoying. So I don't want to be responsible for saying, oh yeah, we're gonna change all these lights. And then everybody in Hamilton's like, you know, we can't even stand this in our house.
Well, the good thing about our LED light, here's the thing, we've converted, say, entire cities, including neighborhoods to light. We have shields put up. We have adjustments put up. You know, like, majority of lights, people light. And then you have a few, depends on how the light is on the bracket and how the house sits, especially in the bedrooms. It comes in and that's understandable because we do get though, our field guys will come at us and get all of those concerns addressed and get it corrected. So we haven't had one where we've gone back out there with an adjustment where the resident has not liked it. So we do have, and we can look at ways to, we have, we're flexible with continuing to make sure that streets live. We put shields up, we reposition the lights.
Okay.
And then one thing, this bit too, about the LEDs as opposed to the open bottoms in those areas. If the pole was sitting on the, on the side of the road, the open bottom has a, a circular distribution, which throws the same amount of light in front as it does to the side and the back. Where the LED hanging over the road has a different type of distribution pattern. Where it would be more, less backlight, more light down on the road. And so it could change.
And that's what I mentioned in our last meeting last month about the lighting pattern. The good thing about, we can take the same LED fixture and the lighting patterns will be catered to those roads. So that's why they're so much more beneficial and the light may, the lighting pollution is greatly reduced. So the open bottoms, you get a lot of that light in people's yards. You lose a lot of that light. And that's probably one of the things that you may be talking about, is that the light pollution for those open bottoms are going into people's yard. And it's just, oh, it's too bright. But with the LEDs, you have the opposite where that lighting is just thrown, that lighting pattern is thrown on that, just on that road. So that's, the technology is phenomenal. But I will make sure I get you some maps and I identify those fixtures and let you know where they are. And then you have my direct information. You're more than welcome. But I will make sure I get you some maps, and I identify those fixtures and let you know where they are, and then, and then you have my direct information, you're more than welcome, because if you work in the evening time, call me, get on my cell number, and I'll make sure you have it again, call me while you're out there, if you have any questions, we can talk about it, send me some pictures, you know, but I'll identify ahead of time for you, if you need me, I'll be.
Okay, alright, that's just, you know, it's sort of, I don't understand a lot of it, and I need to see it.
Well, I tell you, when you get out there, or if you want to, you have some time today, we can look at today, or let me know, I can come back, or if you wanna go out there yourself, and just, uh, FaceTime me, you know, we can look at it together, and I can walk you through, but let me provide you with the map first, and what I'll do is, I will provide you with the map, I will, uh, also, send you the, what the light should look like at those locations, the pictures, and then we'll coordinate like that, and I'll walk you through it.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we get this on credit?
Well, I tell you what, you know, a front costs.
I like the idea that we get a head to head exchange and, and, uh, minimal cost to the city, uh, and the new technologies of the lighting, I think it's gonna be a real benefit to, uh, overall lighting. We've got some real unequally yoked lights now, where some people are most demanded real bright lights to be put up, extra light, and I think we've got over wattage in some areas. And it's more like a spotlight, I, I'd rather have uniform lighting.
In the, the minimum.
At a minimum cost. We try to accommodate folks that ask for that extra light, but sometimes we go way up in the wattage, and it's a big cost factor to the city per light.
Right, and, and due to Mayor and Council, that we look, we analyze both accounts, and we look at, and based on what you currently have out there, most of the lights been out there fifteen, twenty years, and they lose a lot of the, uh, lumens, and so, those lights are really, yeah, it says wattage, two fifty or a one fifty, but the output is really more of a one to one, uh, high pressure sodium, but what we wanna do is put the equivalent of one to one LED, which is the lumens are so much more, uh, 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 better, and, um, that's likely to lose that, uh, 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 you know, service over time.
Well, don't you put, you also put extra lights in for people if they want it put in, but it's.
Well.
Do you do that anymore?
Well, that is.
In the backyard even and stuff.
That has, yes, sir, that, okay, what's the, that's a good question, what's the difference? We don't have an individual LED light for residents yet, that is down the road, if a neighborhood wants LED lighting throughout Alabama Power, it's typically a neighborhood association where the neighborhood pays for those lights monthly, or that developer, or if a city decides, you know, hey, to put them in, we'll take over the monthly, uh, they'll make them street lights for the city, uh, now, individually, if they want a light after the LED lights are put in, we will put a light in for them and add it to their account, not the city of Hamilton's account, but it won't be the LED, because we don't do the individuals yet, that is coming.
How much is that extra light, I, I've got two of them.
The, um, they're more likely to be open bottoms, which are more designed for residential driveway, your yard, your backyard.
Yeah.
Around ten, twelve dollars a month.
Or twenty-five?
Um, depending on, none of the one, if you have a high watt, I'm talking the minimum watt, it's about twelve dollars a month, yeah, about twelve dollars.
Oh, okay, that's good, that's not, I, I've got, I've got one or two of them in that.
Property?
Yeah, I thought it was twenty-five dollars.
No, no, if you, yeah, we do have twenty-five dollar lights, but that's a high watt, it's Cobra.
Or mine is kinda high.
Yeah, and more, more like, and, and again, and that's a good example, that's a good question, that's no different from what you, you mentioned, you have a property, and then you have a fixture that is just too much for you, for your yard, you need a smaller fixture, because those open bottoms, that's what they're designed for, somebody's personal property, whether you look at, look at cigs, you look at roadway, you put open bottoms on there, but there, you know, they are not enough lighting, you know, and you need the opposite, you know, or, 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 or better.
Yeah, but I might not know.
So, 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 that's exactly what we're talking about as far as upgrading your city, moving the city forward, again, guys, just remember, it is your choice, your decision, whatever you wanna make, I just wanna make sure that we talk about both accounts, walk you through what you have, what the options are, and how we can get you moving forward in your city, uh, the, we talked there about being a smart city, getting those lights that for years have been put on your, your roadway that are not proper lighting your roadway, to give it to LED, and then again, the technology of the LEDs that is coming is phenomenal, you know, have network control, like we mentioned in, in our last, uh, council working session about the fixtures that you all will look at, it's a better look, you know, you don't have a big globe, like we mentioned, you don't have the fishbowl look anymore, you have just a sleek look, and it's all, it's not just changing out the bulb, we changed completely the fixture, and it gives your city a better look, and the open bottoms, you don't have any of that glass, you have the little lighting specs, and the maintenance is much so much better.
And it's only gonna cost us about eight hundred dollars a month more than.
If you do the head to head change out with the minimum one to one, you know, for all of them, correct, that, you know, of course, that's option one, but also, you know, I would like for you all to look at all the options, you know, even option two, that may be something you wanna decide.
What's the option two?
The option two is, only anything that is less than a four hundred watt Cobra, instead of doing a head to head change out, if they're two fifties, one fifties, just put in the equivalent of one hundred watt, uh, LED, and then all of the, uh, again, anything less than one hundred watt, upgrade those to one hundred watt, and that helps offset some of that cost, so that is the option two, basically, changing out, upgrade to a minimum one hundred watt Cobra, four hundred, head to head stays the same, anything less than a four hundred, uh, two fifties, one fifties, uh, we don't put in the head to head, the equivalent of those wires, we put the equivalent of one to one.
Is that gonna be less lighting, or he's talking about?
Well.
The option two, is it gonna be less lighting or less lights?
The difference is, is that what you currently have out there now, the two fifty high pressure, so you've had a lot of them out there fifteen, twenty years, so you lost a lot of your lumens, so the lumens, basically, the lumens what you have overlapped the one hundred watt Cobra, so it, it'd be better lighting, because it'd be a more of a cleaner look, instead of the yellow light, and so, it, to your eye light, it'll look better, and you have like, lot, lot less light pollution, but again, if you decide that you don't wanna do that, you do head to head change, wherever those lights are, will come in, and of course, it'd be more of a lumens output if you do head to head, but again, a lot of your roads, you have open bottoms.
Option two did bring our overall cost down to around four something?
Less than four hundred dollars.
I think what it is, option two is your main highways will be brighter with the LED lights.
And then your arteries.
And your neighborhoods will be less bright than your street highways, but they'll still be brighter than they are now with the other.
With your roads have, correct.
And it'd be less cost.
For four hundred.
So, option two.
Three thirty.
It'll be less than four hundred.
That'd be alright, because the streets are what you want.
Right, so, option two is going to take, uh, option two on, on, for both options, are gonna take all of your open bottoms, your neighborhoods, and, you know, there's, some of these fixtures have been out there literally for twenty, thirty, forty years.
I said fifteen, twenty, but.
You change the ba, you know, you change the bulb, but they degrade, uh, I mean, they can degrade up to sixty percent in five years, uh, just the fixture itself of what the light output. So you're taking that and putting in LED, um, Cobra, and so, your, your neighborhoods are gonna be brighter, your, your four hundred watt, those are gonna stay the same, it's just the areas where you have those in between the, the one fifty, the two fifty, which realistically, you're probably getting more light going to a one hundred watt LED, just because of it's new and it's putting out.
How long will it put out that way?
Those, the, the LEDs are, um, they will do, they, they only degrade about nine, so they will degrade to ninety percent after twenty years.
Oh, well, another, you say it's five years.
Oh, well, well, yes, they can degrade up to, yeah, oh, yeah, up to sixty percent.
Oh, this is before five, yeah, and even when they degrade sixty percent, that remaining, um, usage can overflow to your grass, your, your, your sidewalk, so even when they degrade, you're still not getting what's remaining full lighting of your actual road. Uh, and again, with the LED lights, the, the beauty of it, even the lights you've had twenty, thirty years with Alabama Power, you have a lifetime maintenance with us. You just call us and repair them, poles get hit, fixtures get damaged, whether it be, but unfortunately, vehicle, open one gets hurt, uh, weather, uh, old time, you have a lifetime warranty with Alabama Power, so it pays for itself, uh, even better with LED lights, we put in investment, um, no upfront cost to you, it's the same type of lifetime maintenance you have with us, say you have your own lights, you put them in, you're responsible for maintaining them, with poles, you know, down the road, have to be upgraded, upkeep, we do all of that, so, uh, even, it doesn't matter, if something happens where twenty years from now, or even four twenty years from, from now, those LED lights, ten years from now, those LED lights go out or lose something that we guarantee that it won't lose, we come back and replace all of those fixtures with a brand new LED fixture, and you get that one percent, uh, uh, of benefit, no cost to you, the price is held, so again, if you have, have your lights go out and have issues with them ten years down the road with Alabama Power, we come back and we replace those number of lights, hold the price for you, so, so the benefit also is included in those kind of things, a lot of times, us as customers don't think about.
I hated to have to call you guys back for this presentation, but I could have never explained it to my council like you, you guys have, and thank you for returning today to give us an update that's accurate, and we'll, we can plan, make plans under this plan, or option one or two.
And Mayor, I could, I've got one question about it.
Yes, sir.
On storm damage, what's the policy on storm damage?
We, we covered, uh, we come out, because that's, that's something that you all can control, no citizen can control.
Yeah, what, what about, what about storm damage in the past?
We come back and we, we cover it.
We've got a bunch of lights down this highway right here in front of the office that have never been replaced.
Now, you say, when you say storm damage, are you talking about?
Tor- tornaded or.
The lights taken out, or the lights still there and they're not working?
No, the lights, the poles have actually been replaced.
But the light wasn't put back up?
That's correct.
Okay, now, uh, and that's why, uh.
The reason I'm asking, we've got, from the hospital all the way up, even past Sierres Forest Town, there's been several poles down over the last four, five, six years, and a light never has been replaced on them, the poles have been replaced, but the lights haven't.
But the light was there prior to the storm? Okay, so, what, what we do is, is, uh, we have Ms. Melinda here, and we can work with you all, and she's, she's the local person that get those, uh, requests, and so, and that comes up as well, so, and that happen, unfortunately, that happens sometime, we apologize for that, but we can get those, we can look at them, uh, she can look at them and get those addressed for you. And, and that goes back to a city, unfortunately, you know, Tuscaloosa, when they had the storm, strand had come through, it came through and it took out of Alabama Power three thousand poles and lights. Uh, we came back, first of all, City of Tuscaloosa, Tuscaloosa didn't have to report all those lights out, they didn't have to file insurance papers, any red tape, they just contacted Alabama Power, a lot of, they didn't have to contact us, we were aware of it, we came out, we replaced every pole, and should have put every fixture back up, and lit up the entire city with all those fix, three thousand fixtures, that's been years ago, they didn't, they didn't pay anything upfront, all of those lights, the price did not change, the price has been, continued to be held, so what they were paying prior to all those fixtures and poles taken out, is what they continue, continue to pay. So that's a huge benefit a lot of times that we don't often have mentioned, and we should to our customers, because that, unfortunately, we don't want that to ever happen again, but if it does, you are, um, you, we, we have you covered.
That's good. I've got one question on option one.
Okay.
We're not in the lighting business, you know, or I know, but the option one, if we go with that, you, you'll come out and you'll replace the residential streets with the right, right light that goes there.
Yes, sir.
Y'all replace the ones with the open bottom or whatever.
Yes.
Y'all replace the ones that needs to be there.
Yes, head to head change out, we'll change the minimum one hundred watt Cobra, every light, now, we come in, you decide, sometimes happen where we may miss a, a light for whatever reason, whether the bracketing to be replaced or upgraded, or we may not have the actual fixture, because what we do is, once we, uh, once the fixtures come in, and it takes eight to twelve weeks for the fixtures to come in, and then we have to get it worked in, as far, and that's from the time we receive the master agreement, so eight to twelve weeks for the fixtures to come in shipping, because this is a nice sized project, so they'll launch several trucks to come in. Once they come in, we will work with our operations engineer to get it assigned and worked, and so typically, we have a minimum of two crews, and two crews consist of two men and a truck, and each truck can do twenty to twenty-four fixtures, load them up every day, and so, every now and then, what happens is, a lot of time, I come out and look at the operations, and I'll go back and go, looks like we have these, these two blocks, that we have all these coves, and we have one open bottom, what happened? And so, sometimes it may be where we come out and want to load up, we don't have either enough fixtures, or that may be not the right type of fixture, but in that case, we come, we make it right, we come back around and I'll follow, uh, walkthrough, make sure whatever we missed, we put back up, so at the end of the day, you should not have any open bottoms within the city of Hamilton city limits.
Okay, and option two would be that the streets would be covered, and the residential would be maybe a less wattage?
Well, uh, the residential, more than likely, your residential are the open bottoms, a lot of the arteries, because typically, that's where you find most of them, so those, no, those, regardless, both options, is upgrading those to minimum one hundred watt light, so they would, so, doesn't matter which option you choose, the majority of the lights that are open bottom, that should be in your arteries, your neighborhoods, would be the Cobra one hundred, the equivalent of LED one hundred watt, so either option. The difference is, is the lights where you'll find, where typically in your business district or your busy roads, would be the four hundreds, your two fifties, your one fifties, and you may have occasion some open bottoms, so the difference is, is that you'll see a difference, especially there where if you do option two, which is not head to head change out, you're basically anything less than a four hundred, so all your two fifties that are out there now, all of your one fifties that are out there somewhere on your roads, those would be the equivalent of one hundred watt light, so that would be the difference that, you know, in option two, now, option one, it would just be head to head change out, so all of your two fifties, all of your one fifties would be the, so wherever there was a two fifty, um, currently, if you go back out there and look at all the two fifties, it would be the equivalent of a two fifty, and then where your one fifties are located, it would be an equivalent of a one fifty.
So option two is gonna give us more equal lighting, they're all gonna be one or the other, and option one, it may be a one hundred, a one fifty, and a two fifty, because it's gonna be a head to head change out, and so, option two is more uniform.
Well, option two, both of them are uniform, it's just.
Well, it's just.
Option one takes care of everything.
Head to head.
Yeah, and option, and option one too, so, where you have the two fifties, um, and you go back with the LED, where it's a two fifty equivalent, it may be twice as bright, three times as bright, because it's a new fixture, and so, option two is.
Less light pollution.
It, it would be, everything would be uniform, you basically have two ti, two types of lights in, in the city, the bigger version and the smaller version.
Right.
Correct, and, and so, that would be uniform, to, 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 that would be more uniform than, and ten different kinds, like, kind of, how you have that.
Right, so, yeah, but, but basically, um, you have options, however you wanna do it, but at the end of the day, you won't have any open bottoms on your road, you have better lighting, it just depends on which one you, you wanted to do.
Okay, I'm ready.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good job.
You done a good job.
Being thorough, being an explanation, and, uh, Robert didn't even have to work the title it too much. Robert, thank you for joining us today, and I share a common name with you, Robert also.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Done a good job.
Thanks.
Melinda, we'll always be in touch with you. Melinda, we'll always be in touch with you. And thank you to Chuck, y'all, for some of that. That's our best. I told y'all I'd get you a little update on Love's truck stop today, and this is the latest that I got from Scott. And I kind of depend on him to give me a little bit of, this is his message to me when I asked him for an update. He said, I'm in St. Vincent's, my mother's had a heart surgery today, update on Love's. We have a meeting scheduled for the twenty eighth with the engineers for Love's, the county, city, and state to make sure everyone's on the same page. Everything is still proceeding with full force. And that's basically all he's given me today. But Scott is, is attending all the meetings that involve our county, state officials for us and keeping me informed as we go. Everything's full speed ahead. Of course, the crops will be out of the field soon, and we feel like there'll be a ground breaking down there before long. So, everything's still good on Love's. I would ask Mike Johnson, our street department superintendent, to bring us a presentation today and talk about some things that the, the agency has brought to our attention concerning our shop area. So Mike, I want you to talk to us about our Smoky Bear project for the summer and, and tell us kind of some of the inherent problems you've had with that this summer.
Okay. As you know, several months ago, we started talking about possibly asphalt, Smoky Bear Road, basically from the forestry office all the way up to Tenth Avenue, Tenth Avenue, the street to get us by the elementary school. I've contacted two of our local asphalt paving companies, two or three times a piece, and I haven't been able to get them to respond as far as giving us a bid, doing that for us. I've also contacted a company out of Mississippi that has responded to us and given us a quote and has agreed to work with us on the price. Basically, all, what I did was called, called them, they sent the, yeah, the estimates over here. We went over there and he looked at the project and, and kind of advised us on what, what he thought we needed to do, and I agreed with him. The, basically what they're saying we need to do is mill the sides of the road. If you go there and look, there's about sixteen or eighteen, maybe twenty-four inches of new, newer asphalt. It's, it's that far away from the sidewalk. So what we're proposing to do would be to mill that down to where we can gradually put asphalt from sidewalk to sidewalk, and then to mill into the sidewalk. So they're going to have to mill that up and mill down in the bottom where the cover was, where it's real rough. So you'll get a leveling layer there, and then they'll come back and do about a three inch or so overlayment of what's already there, so we have a good smooth go down. What, how this came up was, I just, I was having trouble getting somebody to even come give us a quote, a bid on it. Contacted them, they came and looked, and then I wanted to go, they gave us several references in writing, so I called three, four of those people, and they all said they, they did excellent work, they're a good company. Got some brochures and stuff that showed some of the work that they do. The, the problem was that, that it came in over the fifty thousand dollar bid limit. And so, with them being the only one that bid on it, I, I couldn't get anybody else to do it. So I, I called them back and I said, look, we've got, you know, a fifty thousand dollar, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to do it out. We've agreed to work with us and lower the price so that we can actually.
Over four thousand dollars.
Over four thousand dollars. So we're under the fifty thousand dollar bid limit, and I've got both those quotes here for you to see. And I guess my question is, do you want me to move any, move father and ask them to come do it, or?
Sounds like a good price.
But it's, you know, nineteen one hundred. Yeah, it was doing that street, it's going houses around forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. And it was over, it was close to fifty, fifty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Fifty-four thousand there initially being, so they agreed to work with us.
To prepare the distance from the exit road here at the plant down to the airport, that's eight hundred thousand to fix that road, and we're getting this road repaired for forty-nine thousand eight, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. The, the road that goes from the elementary school road back to Highway seventeen with new asphalt and there's going to be grinding process.
Yeah, they'll mill, they'll on both sides, and then they'll mill in the rust spots, and.
Now, that other road's being fixed under a federal grant. We're not, we're not coming up with that money. That money's been granted to the plant because they are providing all that two hundred and fifty jobs. And that's how they got that grant to fix that road.
Well, now, you're in that bid.
Oh, it's high.
What do you think about that?
Figure about a hundred thousand dollars plus a mile is about what it gets made it to be.
You think that's a good price?
I mean, it's high.
Yeah, but I meant, it's a, you know, if you have to have it done, what I'm saying.
You gotta have it done, and this needs to be done.
That's what.
It's all the bid you can get.
It's the only one I've got so far, you know.
That's the way, that's the first four, I mean, nobody else gonna do it.
Mike and I have been discussing this since we talked about our paving project in the summer numerous times, and he's told me the efforts he's made to try to get these bids turned in, and nobody's come forward. Tim Simmons out there represents this company, and they're headquartered over in the head of Mississippi. And he told me that he'd like a chance to work on some of our smaller projects, or big projects for that matter. He said, we'll do any size job. And so, I've got the card to Mike, and he called representatives of the company, and they immediately reacted without hesitation. And I'm hoping that we can allow them to do this work and see what kind of work they do. And we may use them a lot in, in the future if they want to do our work.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd love for one of our local people, I mean, I'm not against.
Yeah.
I'd prefer, I'd prefer our people, our local people to do it, but, you know.
It looks to me like that's a pretty big job there, fix the road the way it is.
Well, I think it's, it's a, the way I see it, it's, it's not big enough for some people. You know, when they've got miles and miles and miles.
Rusty logs and their gun construction and people like that, they won't, they won't mess with the job like that.
But anyway, I'll talk about that, if you want to move forward. Now, our second thing is, our city shop, we're being bombarded with problems, with water runoff, with.
This is a government agency getting ahold of us now, but it's not our problem, it's problems they're saving, we, that exists. A deal, I believe.
Yes, I am.
Who's on your back now?
So, we've, we've got problems with our fuel tanks, it's a big problem. We're going to have to do something, whether we add cement areas to catch possibility of gas fields, diesel fuel spills. Some work's going to have to be done there. The sewer system is down there, some work's going to have to be done with that. Of course, we, we still haven't done anything as far as washing vehicles down there, we can't, we can't do that.
Now, we talked about that.
We did talk about that.
We talked about it, and.
But it's more than just.
And Rodney talked about it.
Yeah.
And there was a plan, but the plan wasn't sufficient.
Well, it's going to have to be permitted regardless, and it's going to have to have possibly oil separators and all that kind of stuff. It's more to it than just running it into the sewer system at this point.
Because the oil can't go in the sewer system.
Right.
It hasn't, yeah.
So, I mean.
Max, can you give us the price?
Well, what I'm doing, I'll take care of this a little bit further.
Okay.
Paul.
Per caller.
Buck caller, with Goodwin, Nails.
We can't do the math from ourselves.
Yeah, we've got thirty, we've got thirty days to, to come up with a plan to answer that.
And we can't ask our own busted, we've got to get an engineer's opinion.
That's right. So he came down yesterday, and we're looking at different options. We may, may even, may even have to move, because of cost reasons, move our fuel pumps completely out and go to a different way of purchasing fuel. So, but we're weighing in all the different, different ways. Because there, with your fuel system down, with our gas pumps and fuel pumps down there, you've got to have a spill prevention plan in place, you've got to have equipment there on hand to, if you have a spill, how you're going to handle it, and, and all of the materials to get it, get it cleaned up done. And then it has to be monitored, and you have to buy permits year after year. I mean, it, it's, the biggest problem now, I think, is with the fuel tanks down there, and not necessarily the washing of the vehicles. We've got water running off the parking lot that feeds into the creek. And that's, we can't even have water running, you know, they don't want to run it off the pavement into the creek, and that's where it all feeds to.
So, there's also a possibility that because we have a garbage collection that is something other than household waste, we might have to be permitted to have a commercial receptacle, receptacle down there.
Possibly, yeah, and possibly on our.
They're on our back, right?
Yeah, our tank.
Spot is for on their radar.
Our cars. You know, we may have to do something different there, and it's just a.
How much were you willing to talk about those ones?
One was for sixteen hundred.
Most of three thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was like twenty-nine ninety-five or something, two thousand ninety-five.
You'd ask them, where the water off our highways is going to go, is it going into the.
I'd argue with them, but.
I'm with you, no, yeah.
They're kind of like, you don't want to argue with them a whole lot. Those are the two, two things I want to talk about.
Well, we got to give us a bid.
We do, yeah.
But, but what is the, what's the plus of paneling tops down there?
Well, it's easy access for us and the, and the fire and the.
All the police and stuff there, I guess.
We can actually, well, it's just easier access, really.
But I mean, like.
If you had to go to a pump somewhere, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
We could look to the different, so far, a different avenue that we could possibly have like a credit card that's assigned to each individual person that has a bike or get fuel, and it will tie that person to that amount of gas or decent fuel that's all, and possibly even tie it to a vehicle with mileage. Right now, we just tie it to, to whoever, whoever gets, gets fuel at the pump, so. But that's not in stone, so I, we're just talking about the possibility of whether the person has the capability of doing that, he's not sure if he has the capability of doing that now. In the past, the police department, I think, has purchased fuel from one of the local gas stations around. And they have maybe one card or a charge account or whatever they did before. So, if, if we could get this worked out, it, it might be in our best interest in the long run to do away with our fuel system at the shop and go to a place that, of course, all that stuff has to be bid. So whoever bids will have to have capability of handling what, what we need to do. Having access to it twenty-four hours a day, being able to have a card.
I guess as government bureaucrats, we just close it down with the garbage pile up.
Well, the bad thing about just closing it down is, when we close down those pumps or not, they're going to have to be gone. I mean, if we close it down. If not, we're going to have to do some repairs to the pumps that are there and add some concrete padding out front and a, and a way to capture the fuel if we're, where this spill some on the ground. It's got to run into some kind of bat and.
Wonder what they do at these regular gas stations where people spill all around their fuel, that they did the same things there? None of it makes sense.
It looks like you just need to come up with something and bring it back to us.
I will, I will.
And we've got to do something about it.
We should know something about it.
Not everybody can, all of it. We got to, we got to do it.
There's an idea working already together for a plan, and they've both recorded to me on what they think that they should do. And I, I'm letting them team up and, and give us recommendations, because they have these departments that use a lot of their fuel. He's got big trucks, tractors, lawn mowers, Rodney's got similar equipment.
I think between all the departments, we probably use the most, probably the police department is next. I think we use the most, but we've all got the equipment that has to be fueled. Our departments there quite often fuel them, and almost everybody, everybody uses it.
And they like it's been spilled on the ground, people with a pump sassaft, they were buying it from the pump, pumping it.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you now, there's, there's, nobody's ever just let it overflow and puddle up. But, you know, sometimes when you take the nozzle out, it'll dribble a few drops on the ground.
That's everywhere.
It is.
I mean, it's everywhere.
It is.
Every station in this country.
Well, no sign of any serious spillage, there's a little dark area right there.
You got to remember that place has been there thirty something years. And if you keep parking a truck in the same spot time and time again over the years, you're going to have a, a spot there.
Every parking lot, everywhere across these kind of stations like that.
I'm not defending this or trying to, we do the best we can, and.
We want to avoid them finding us or, or putting more pressure on us if we can. We've, I've asked them to try to find solutions, I want y'all to know.
We'll come up with something for sure.
We have a letter, and we're having to get permits already for some stuff. Okay, had a little update on the shopping center for y'all. A lease agreement was signed last week with the ramp to lease the shopping center. I'm thinking long term. I talked to Louie Stinnings yesterday, and she said that she had Dirt Cheap and Farmer's Furniture lined up to come here and occupy those stores. But the man that owned the property out in California has gone over her head and, and done business and signed a, a long-term lease with the ramp. So they'll be making moves toward improvements as they can bring things into focus as to which way that they want to go. So we, we'll be seeing some improvement in the property down there in the near future. On miscellaneous items, I just will not really probably decide on this, but I want y'all to think about whether or not in October, memberships become available for C three. And I want you to think about whether or not you want to discuss the possibilities there of coming back into the C three and see if they could help promote us in some other areas that they work. And their cost is twenty-five thousand a year to be in a, for a city like us. And also, we've got this Highway seventeen sidewalk project. And also, we've got this, uh, so, Highway seventeen sidewalk project, uh, has been awarded us. The numbers I had when I talked to y'all last were indirect. I've actually got Miss Kay Ivey's signature on the slider right here. The award was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, uh, that was awarded us to put in that, uh, walkway over to the rec center from Highway seventeen and with the state doing a nice crosswalk there for us, lading crosswalk. The city's twenty percent match on that is, uh, forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. I thought it was gonna be over sixty-six thousand, but when the numbers, when we didn't have to go all the way down to the corner and go around by Smokey Bear Road, it brought the cost down on the project a lot of money less. So the cost estimates of the entire project's two hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Out of that, we'll receive a grant, uh, from TAP funds. This is federal money. Hundred and seventy-eight two fifty-nine and our part will be forty-four five sixty-five. And we've got to adopt the, uh, resolution to accept this grant by an answer in, uh, short order. So I need to put that on Monday night's agenda if we're gonna accept the state grant. It's federal grant that we've been noting by, by Deco, uh, State Agency.
And that would go straight from the walking track across the road to the co-op, straight to the-
Yeah, co-op's still agreeable. We checked with them. They're still agreeable with us out of the land. All we'll have to do is build the sidewalk and light it and keep them a good fence that, uh, gives them their boundaries, uh, that they need to operate their business. And that'll keep, that'll keep the kids from straying over the fence on the newspaper and straying over the fence on the co-op 'cause they'll have a clear shot while going down through there.
So they're going down between the co-op and the newspaper?
Probably through the fence, yeah.
No, but where, where will this project type?
Oh, okay. The co-op's given us plan right down their line. They're giving us, uh, a leasement down their line, a permanent leasement, to use their property and, uh-
Between the co-op and the newspaper?
It'll be between the co-op and the newspaper.
Okay, and so they'll come out on the county property on the back side?
They'll come out, it'll go down the co-op's property all the way to the road. Co-op goes all the way to the road.
Okay.
They'll go, the annex will be the next building over on that end, courthouse annex. They'll stay on the co-op property all the way down. It's, they've got a straight, like, straight sharp line that goes-
And that's how the grant was written? I thought originally the grant was written to go all the way around.
It was amended-
Okay.
-to accommodate this, uh, new plan. There's a, that was submitted a plan for growing. We did have a costlier plan that took us around, but it was, once we found out that we could get land from the co-op and we didn't think that other roads would be safe down, the other wall would be safe down there below, we amended it.
And last time you were gonna check with them because the, the crosswalk sign is still up and we discussed that last time, but the flashing part of it's blocked over and it's not intact.
It's in their hands to fix it now. I don't know when they'll get it fixed. I had a talk with Wes today concerning the, uh, ingress segress for the service station. He said that the Haldut folks that's having to look at the plan have not submitted it back to them. They're on local levels so they can give the go-ahead for the exact ingress segress for the station, but it's being reviewed. Station's progressing real fast. It's looking good.
Trying to, down here.
The front of it's gonna look exactly like, they came back and made more pictures. The, the contractor's been asked to design it just like City Hall, complete with the white, that thing across the top to make it look uniform, like it fits in the community.
I had heard that he had sold out. Is anything of that?
Similarly?
Yeah.
Well, in fact, so I talked to him yesterday.
I talked to him today and he's, he's gone to get it done.
I had heard that, but I didn't believe him, did you?
Uh, I think, uh, he, he certainly didn't reveal any of that to me.
No, he didn't.
Anything else we need to, you had a couple of others?
I just had, uh, wanted us to consider closing one of the checking accounts that we had on the benevolence fund. We haven't had any activity in it since two thousand and sixteen. It's only got like twenty-eight dollars in it. That was initially set up, uh, people would contribute to it periodically. So the police department, Kathy has always handled that account where if, if somebody was coming through town and they needed a place to stay, you know, she, she could pay from that benevolence fund and put them up in a hotel room or buy them gas or whatever. You know, nobody's contributed to it in a long time.
Twenty-eight dollars ain't gonna buy much.
No.
I have a motion to close that account.
And I'll put it on the agenda for Monday.
Officially covered.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention it, you know, that I, I didn't, to bring it up on Monday as y'all don't know.
After a year, if an account's not used, it becomes what's called a dormant account. After, I believe it's three years, it has to be turned into the state treasurer's office. If it's not used in three years, I think the bank's required to send it to the state. It's a dormant account after. Scott, we appreciate you being here today. Thank you for coming.